She got double up on it. Yes.
Lord, we come to you this afternoon, oh God, just want to praise and lift your holy name in this place, oh God. Lord, we give you glory, give you honor, and we pray that all that belong to you, oh God. I ask you, the church, each and every council member in here, oh God, let us make the right decisions for this city, oh God. Put us in one, God, let us be unified in making decisions, oh God. Lord, you continue to spread our America, continue to cover and protect it, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon, give you honor, and give you praise, because it's in your name, Lord, that we be able to move and have our thing. We thank you for our police department, continue to keep them safe through these holidays and this summer, God. Look on our fire department, continue to keep them safe, oh God. Look on our whole city, oh God. Lord, we need a blessing in this city of the more, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. We need to stop the violence in this city, oh God. Oh, Lord, we need you to spread your word, oh God, through this city, oh God. Cover with your blood. Oh, Lord, fill it with your love, oh God. Give us that love that run from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. Do it for your glory, God. Save in this city, deliver in this city, set free in this city, oh God. And look on our finance department, oh God, they continue to find money for this city, oh God. And, Lord, we thank you, hallelujah. We give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise, because it all belong to you, oh God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
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 Let us place the flag, please, for the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
Good afternoon. Hey, Nick, is it? Test one, two, one, two. All right, this is it right there. Good evening, everyone, we're gonna call out mean to order on the answer. Mr. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Mayor McClendon.
President.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Kat. Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed. Councilmember Mohammed. Councilmember Mindy.
Here.
Councilmember Mary.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Eight out of ten.
We have eight out of ten preses, so we have a quorum. I did hear from Councilwoman Mohammed and Dr. Bruce, who is out as well. Our bid openings. We had bid openings, we had a bid opening with West Memphis Utilities, uh, as well as our utility department. If you would look at the West Memphis Utility Repairing Painting of the 500,000 gallon Clearwater Concrete Tank, as well as you go down and listen to the, or look at the permission to review the bid list for our new power transformer for Polk and Hudson that's placed up under the permission request, you all see both of those requests? Can I get a motion in second?
Refer back. Refer back to the committee.
Second. All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, those, I refer it back. Uh, can I get a motion in second to approve the minutes if there was no additional corrections?
Motion approved, Mr. Stevens.
Second. All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? The minutes are approved. We had no old business, so I'm gonna turn the new business over to Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, may I make a motion to suspend the rules and retitle only for all one?
I second that motion.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved. Mr. City Attorney?
An ordinance creating a question on the 2022 general election ballot for the registered voters of West Memphis to transfer $2.3 million and any other accumulated balance from the Crittenden County Jail and Detention Center to now be allocated to the City of West Memphis General Fund unrestricted and for other purposes.
Can I pause and suspend the rules and places on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All the pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? City Attorney?
An ordinance creating a question on the 2022 general election ballot for the registered voters of West Memphis to transfer $2.3 million and any other accumulated balance from the Crittenden County Jail and Detention Center to now be allocated to the City of West Memphis General Fund unrestricted and for other purposes.
Can I get a pause to suspend the rules and places on the third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
All the pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? City Attorney?
An ordinance creating a question on the 2022 general election ballot for the registered voters of West Memphis to transfer $2.3 million and any other accumulated balance from the Crittenden County Jail and Detention Center to now be allocated to the City of West Memphis General Fund unrestricted and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion.
Mayor, could, will you ask the City Attorney to kind of do a briefing?
Yes.
For the public to double what we're talking about here?
Well, uh, there was a, uh, sales tax, I believe it was passed, uh, that apparently had a sunset clause. I don't have that number in front of me to tell you what the number was, but it was collected for the purpose of housing of prisoners at the detention center, as I recall. That purpose, uh, was completed. Uh, the tax is no longer being collected due to it sunsetting, and there's money left in the account that cannot be used unless the voters of the city approve, uh, the council moving that to the, uh, general fund in order for it to be spent for other purposes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance is strongly recommend that we, we do this. Hearing none, all pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? It's passed. Mr. Clerk, would you get that ordinance a number, please?
Two six zero nine. Two six zero nine.
Two six zero nine. We're gonna move down to, uh, permission request. Permission to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment number two to the professional service agreement with HDR Engineering for Engineering Services at the Port of West Memphis, where this amendment having been approved by the West Memphis Port Authority and referred to the city council. The amended agreement amount is 109,000 and will be paid from the Port Authority's special account set up for disbursement of grant funds received from the, what, some of the Arkansas Waterways Commission. You all know that we was awarded a million dollar grant, and it was a 10% match, so this is basically that match. What's the, I get a motion in second?
Motion to approve.
Is there any further discussion about that? Hearing none, all pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? It's approved. Committee reports, uh, I'm the one that said they had something with the budget committee, uh, that you wanna go over, and you just wanna?
Yeah, I'm gonna real quickly go over this. Uh, we got some updates today, so it'd be brief. The revenue for the, uh, month of June came in, uh, Southland Casino was at, uh, 976,000. The, uh, city and county tax receipts were 880,000, and, uh, advertising and promotion was 232,000. And then if you look down at your, uh, city outstanding debt services for April, this is for April 2002, you will notice you've got updates in your, uh, that Ms. Perry passed out today, so you can look at those updates, but, uh, uh, the two that actually dropped down were the airport bond at 2.2 million and $50, and then the municipal buildings dropped down to 10 million, 664, 533. The other two remain the same. The park bond is on there only because it's, uh, just to stay out in front of us, uh, but it is in the architects', uh, it's in the architectural status now where they're, uh, doing the plans. Uh, we talked about the overage, uh, disposition for the 2.3 million that was collected from the expired detention, uh, center bond, uh, that's going on the ballot in November. Uh, the public works, we did discuss a request for public works, uh, to, uh, look at the, uh, West Memphis Code Enforcement Salary Schedule.
Excuse me, Councilman Crum, uh, on, on that one, I'm gonna ask that the legislative body please give the administrative on that because that's part of that.
No problem. And then, uh, Mr. Kenneth J- Johnson, uh, reported on the, uh, Roberta Jackson Community Center, uh, projects. We had two projects, one on down there, one of them was the plumbing, it's been corrected. Uh, the other was the reading program, and it's active and ongoing, and, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Murphy's doing a really good job down there with that group.
Yes.
Uh, Kenneth Johnson also introduced, uh, Amina Brown.
Amani. Amani.
Okay, Amani Brown, and, uh, I practiced that, didn't know. And, uh, she is, uh, the new purchasing agent, uh, is an addition to the West Memphis Purchasing Department under Kenneth. Amani, if you're in here, I apologize for mispronouncing her name. Uh, other than that, that was, that concludes that report.
All right. What, uh, did I overlook any other, uh?
No, I was just gonna say what Ms. Tori passed out today, we'll accept it as the clerk and treasurer report as well.
Okay. All right, uh, the report that Ms. Tori gave out. Okay, thank you. Uh, I had no appointments, um, I had no presentations. I have one announcement. The announcement is basically we starting up another summer jobs program, which is the, which is gonna be paid for by Arkansas Workforce Services. Um, the ages are 14 to 24. Now, it takes two weeks for us to get that work permitting, and I don't know if 14 to 15 years old, but they be able to do it at this point due to, we hoping to start it sometime next week. But this program is a little different because it'll be paid $12 an hour, like, I think we done, but it would not be city departments. Actually, these individuals can work at other businesses we're here in the city that has qualified, has paperwork, if you know, one of the interested that own the business that can be able to hire some of our young people, then, like I said, we not just young people, but they got from 18 to 24, who's graduated, they can also apply certain criterias that they will have to meet, but, um, Ms. Tawana Bailey can give them all of the criterias that they need. So, I'm just saying, if Langston want to have five of them, we are paid for those by to go to Langston, that would be 18 to 24, so. And if they covered by their insurance, we ask, we ask, we ask every question in the world, we would not be no kickback for all of the city, so that's something that we will be doing, saw next week. Anyone else having the announcements? City Clerk?
I, I, I forgot to ask earlier, um, I wanted to request charity days money, if I can, can I make a request to add that to the agenda?
Make a motion.
Make a motion, I'm making a motion, I wanted to make a motion to give, um...
Oh, oh, excuse me, can you add, can make the motion?
I'm just gonna add to the agenda. I didn't know if I need to tell the whole thing, what I, what I was adding, that's what I was about to do.
I just wanna get an add, and then you.
Permission to, okay.
You make the motion to add.
I'm asking to add to the agenda, my charity days.
Who got a second?
Add it to the agenda.
Councilman Kat, second, all pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Ms. Hutchinson, you go ahead.
I am requesting to give $800 to St. John Missionary Baptist Church. St. John Missionary Baptist Church, yes, ma'am, children's ministry.
Is that, that all?
Yeah, with my permission, permission request.
All pay by?
Aye.
Is there a second?
I get a motion, I get a motion to approve.
So moved.
In second. All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? It's approved.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Councilwoman Hutchinson, did you wanna go over?
I did, Mayor, uh, very quickly, I know, and, and as I, you know, normally you and I have an opportunity, I try to talk with you, um, and, and ask some things before I bring it to the entire council, but for purposes of going on the record, there were several things that I wanted to mention concerning war too. One of them would be, um, and this is an issue that kind of carry over, carried over into your administration from, uh, Mayor Johnson. The cemetery that's in the, I think we call it the Old Doug's Division, I mean, uh, not, is it Doug, Dab, Dab?
Dab.
Okay, you're familiar with that?
Yes.
And the constituency was over there, we've talked about this, um, this is the, actually the third summer. I've actually got in touch with the property owners, which would be a church, there was a church years ago. It's been an ongoing thing, um, even when, I think I reached out with Mr. Bonner at the time, about possibly could we go over there, kill this grass? The problem is the, the snakes that, the, I mean, it's not just few snakes, these are like infestation because of this area. I want to go on record just to mention to you again, I don't know what solution we could come up with.
Well, I can, you know, last council made the council approve them, those funds for me to cut additional lots.
Mm-hmm.
And what I would do, I would possibly get a contractor, if not, I can get the city to get over there and cutting it. Right now, we can cut it and try to spread, hopefully, um, hope, hope they get the job done, but right now, I know we need to come up with a plan that's gonna continue to make sure that that, that take place. I don't think the church no longer exists, correct?
No, the, actually, they do, I, I, and I talked with them, they're just, you know, of course, that's their property, and it was back in the 60s, and they, I even talked with several, several family members that have people bury it back there, um, so we don't wanna just do away with it. What the resolve would be, and I know Mayor, Mayor McClendon, before we can make a commitment, you definitely wanna look at, because we're not just talking about tall grass, this is almost trees. I mean, it's that tall.
Let, let me get a little help on that, I, I don't think.
I don't, it's, it's a kind of, it's a...
Could we just cut other people, we can't use city resources all the time, so, to the turn of City Clerk, I know he know a lot more about it.
Well, I mean, I probably need to get some more information, uh, about it before I kind of answer about it, but if there's a cemetery back there, I mean, that, that brings in some other issues that, you know, we'd have to kind of worry about, um, you know, so that's why I probably need to get a little bit more information.
Okay, well, thank, look, what I do, and I just wanted to go on record, because like I said, after you talk with people for so long, they're under the impression that you're blowing them over, you're not really trying to address the issue, so I wanted to go on record today stating that, you know, I did bring it before to the council, and as you, as you stated, City Attorney, it's more than just saying what we can do, there may be some big areas that we need to, to look at, so for that...
We, we are definitely gonna say that, Attorney, and Mr. Clerk, will you give?
And one other thing we possibly look at is the fact that, um, most of the regional prison, prison around in this area, they would come down and cut it. Now, I, I need to check and see, because what happened the last time, they stopped because when, every time they brought a crew down, people start, you know, relatives and things start coming around, so they stopped. But I could check and see, because actually, we could look at Osceola, order one down and break, and see if they'll do it. I, I, I just think we...
Cause I know Sheriff Allen, just last week, gave us a couple trustees, uh, I know Osola was the normal ones that cut it, so. Uh, Councilwoman Hutchinson, we will follow up and see what we need to do to get the thing correct, go ahead.
That was the first issue. Second issue, this constituent, um, at 529 South 11th Street, Mayor, make a, just make a note of that address. This person, um, advised that they had spoken with you, I know you said you were not particularly familiar, for, um, once again, an issue with this property that kind of carried over to your administration. I'll follow up with you, and then hopefully, we can have a resolve.
Do they want it cut, or?
Well, this is property that was promised to be, uh, torn down and was supposedly looked over, uh, with the, with the, all the demolition that we've done here recently.
Okay.
Once again, thi- this property is something that was going on before you, um, came into, to office, however, it is something that I do want us to look at again, so that we can help, hopefully have a resolve.
We, we're definitely looking at that, if we, we not do, uh, demoing, so we see it doing, so maybe we just get it on the list, if, if it meets, let me, hold on, let me say that, if it meets the criterias.
Okay.
Cause it's certain criteria we have, we just can't turn, you know.
Absolutely, and that's my reason for wanting to make, bring this, uh, you know, publicly. Uh, last, and this last issue, uh, Council Bruce, he spoke on the no noise ordinance that we currently have. I do not know what we have, I, I looked at something that's kind of old, Mayor McClendon, I don't know if you're familiar, do we actually have a no noise, uh, ordinance for?
We, we do.
We do, okay, well, um...
It's, it's one of the harder ordinances that we have, and what I mean by that, if, if, if we call the police on, just say, Councilman Crum, just say, got music real high, but then you get that Councilman Crum, music ain't high, you know?
And, and, and that's once again, quantitative versus qualitative, what, what is considered high? What is the noise? Where, where is it, the noise coming from? There are different factors that I, I understand, but they also are, um...
What's located?
I, I don't wanna say, I do not wanna say because of, uh, problems with, with the, the neighbors, I, I wanna word it that way. The reason, what I'm bringing up is, the reason why I'm bringing it up is, the, the current noise ordinance that we have, is it possible that we can look that, look at that and maybe do some updates and, and make some, um, I don't, uh, things that maybe will address the issues that we have?
Well, I think that, you know...
Within, within the legal realms, not, not going over any state or anything that's already put in place, I, I'm just...
As, as the legislative body, yes, you all can make any changes, I just think for the unfortunate part, you know, if, I'm, I'm just throwing something out there.
I understand.
If Mr. Monday had his, uh, music up, but then when we made it there and it wasn't there, I guess it would be just a thing of, to the attorney?
Well, we, we get some loud music ordinance violations that come through court, um, it, you know, I, I can't say, there are not many of them that, while I'm there, uh, but, but typically, there's other charges along with them, uh, usually, and a lot of times, those violations get merged in or, or dismissed a lot of times, but the purpose is to get the music down, you know, to get, if the police come out there, I think they give them a break maybe one time or, or, you know, usually, and then if they have to come out there more than one time, that's when they start writing citations now.
And that's the issue with this, I mean, this is, uh, more than one time.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I wanted to be able to, to say clearly before I started working with any other issues that I brought this before the council, I knew there would be some things that I maybe had to run before you, uh, City Attorney, City, City Attorney, and then, uh, Mayor McClendon as well, wanted to just go on record speaking on those issues, because after so long, uh, the people that we're talking with, they are under the impression that we're just saying things just to be saying for the moment, and that's certainly not what my intentions are. Um, so, to, to conclude those concerns, that would be that, I will follow up, and also, uh, City Attorney, there's some drafts that I wanted you to just kind of look at, uh, noise debate minutes and other things possibly that we can look at to, to update what we have, and that kind of concludes my concerns, thank you so much, didn't want to take what, as much time, but I definitely wanted to put that on record.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hutchinson.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Mayor, can I tack on something related to what, uh, Councilor Hutchinson is talking about, and that's the fireworks ordinance? Uh, we need to bring that up and look at it and see if there's some little changes that we can make in it also.
Sure, I, I think it's gonna ready to come up in a few minutes, so, uh, so, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Anyone else having the announcements, anything they need to bring forward? All right, hearing none, uh, can I get the motion in second to add Ms. Pamela Brown to the, uh, citizen request?
So moved.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? The gentleman told me they're gonna allow her to speak first, so, Ms. Brown, come over, we know, they, come to the mic, we know, they give five minutes and give your name and your address.
I want to thank you, Mayor, and the gentleman and the gentlemen of this city, and I'm in the city. I came, I just heard her talk about noise ordinance, so I need a city ordinance for June 10th, which is June 11th, and I found out that it's already cut off on the 20th, and as long as it's being, we want to celebrate two independence, America's independence from Great Britain and the slaves' independence from our, within our country. So, if we cut off a few days in the middle, make sure everybody can, so, we're not buying fireworks on the fourth anymore, if we can't have them on the ninth, so, I'm not trying to do anything, I just really want to come across, it's time that we put us back into the mix with people and stop embracing, we have to stop doing this to each other. We got the love, I love this city. When I grew up in the city with you, when we, when I was a little girl, I'm 65, when you go down 8th Street, it looked like it was a mardi gras, it was just thick. I can remember all the stores, and get up at our front, man, they're all dilapidated, we could use that with children, our kids need something, Mary has everything, I give it to them, I'm not mad at them. I'm proud of them pretending to care about the city, but I see our city is dilapidated. On one side of town, the grass is not cut, the trees are overgrown, other nature has taken back, the houses that are gone, some need to be moved out. Fronts on Broadway, please, could y'all give these kids something to do, and stop giving them trouble. A lot of people wanna turn their kids because it gives a lot of out, we need mentors, we need men that will stand up for each young boy, take them by hand, get taught them to put that gun down, so we don't have any more shootings the way we have on either side of our island. We are supposed to be one nation, when we set that flag, when we say our pledge of allegiance, if you remember the words, they have a lot of meaning to them, and for everybody to have their same feeling, to their same meaning, that is my religion is in this one. So, if you guys can help us with this city ordinance, so move it up today, that it was time to buy fireworks for our, if we value it on Fourth of July, and it makes more sense for the city to make three times the tax money than two times. And when we do it like that, everybody is satisfied and everybody is covered, when we cover all the people, then we don't get our job as West Memphians. Otherwise, we let some people out, or we do, we just erase them out, and let them stay here, but that's not the solution, the solution for this city, to come back together, make it, yeah, make it look like something. This is not what I grew up, just look like an old dilapidated town, we need to develop in this. I was listening to your budget and what we can do, but nobody's putting money back into our leg when it's life, and you guys said this money is all I want. My heart goes out to kids, why I, I started teaching, so they get out, we stood, then I was a servant, so I, wait, there's probably some, everybody in my life, I've met a lot of people in my life. In general, God has always made people have a part of somebody else, and one thing I do like about people, if somebody's car is down on the side of the road, I don't care what color you are, they all will come and assist you. So let's assist each other now, and then we don't have to hurt that our grandchildren, everybody, we should have Mary got a math, what, a math lab, uh, another, see, now all our kids are going to marry. My whole family, we, we move with time, we don't stay stagnant, and we don't want to be stagnant, but I wrote, my kids starting to move to Mary. All of my grandchildren now are not even with in schools anymore, and that's money coming back, that's production, so, Mary has helped things to offer us, so we take better care of them. Even when my kids came up, they went to one, but my twins went to Brad, because it was a better education with Brad's and Annie's. So, you know, what we do, I tell my people, you go to work, you can get the best education and the best knowledge and be a productive person in this world. And the people right now, they can be those people that y'all may look to be, but everybody here, they put me, we gonna die off, and those people that doing all that, somebody gonna come up, and we need to do it as a group of West Memphians, and as a family of West Memphians, to take their part of West Memphis, and that's all I want to say. And I just want to thank you guys, and to thank God, and just meditate, something like, not even a white man being up here, but at the end of the day, we all live in this city, so I'm living there, kudos to you, so that is a better place to raise a child and the education is where you gotta do in the West Memphis school system. I think that first thing.
Test don't show it.
Test may not show it, but you know what? If you be, if you build some dreams, just like you feel a dream, if you build it, they'll come, if you feel something, if you make them an incentive enough to want to be a part of West Memphis, if we can change some things, if we sit and stay on our selflessness, we will never change anything. And I listen to your prayer.
Okay.
If it's nothing to pray, can't touch your heart, then let nothing touch your heart.
Excuse me, Tan. No, Tan.
My friend.
Yeah, Tan.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Ms. Brown.
Can you give us your address, please?
To the next one. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Also, second, I'll bring up, I wanna call my good friend, I'm gonna respect right now, come... Come up, uh, Mr. Massey, give your name and your address and.
And I just want to let them know each one of you have five minutes unless, you know, Council asks, of course.
Uh, my name is Richard Massey. I live at, uh, six fourteen closer drive in Marion. I recently graduated from the academy of West Memphis. And I'm entering the University of Memphis as a political scientist. I want to thank Mr. Mayor and the City Council Lodge for providing me with the opportunity to, uh, relay my concerns. And I want to ask that God cohesively guide us and pave the way for meaningful reform in this crisis in this city. Three years ago, I spoke before the City Council for the very first time with a half month of a friend, Taylan Bell.
Taylan accomplished what many deemed inconceivable for a sixteen-year-old from West Memphis. Besides from his effortless charm, irresistible charisma, and adored sense of humor, Taylan wasn't just a typical teenager by any means. Taylan's drive and determination coincided perfectly with his undeniable talent, a talent that I now have to reference posthumously. For those of you who enjoy college basketball, you probably know that Kentucky basketball is the upper echelon of collegiate hoops. On Motive Day twenty nineteen, Taylan's loving mother, Ms. Tabitha, was given a sealed envelope embellished with the University of Kentucky stamp, Taylan's favorite basketball team. Within the envelope was a Kentucky jersey signed by Coach Calipar, an extended scholarship offer also signed by the coach. Because of an untimely straight bullet, I can't discuss with Taylan what NBA team he'd want to be drafted to. I can't discuss what position he sees himself playing or who he mostly mirrors his play style after. I can now only recant on the countless memories and laughs that Taylan gave us during his time with us. Unfortunately, this harrowing reality has become a precursor to the American experience. American communities sit galvanized at their screens every other day as news of another tragic mass shooting breaks again and again and again. As of now, everywhere from an elementary school in Uvalde, Texas, a hospital in Tulsa, Oklahoma, an Independence Day parade in Highland Park, Illinois, a nightclub in Chattanooga, Tennessee, a grocery store in Buffalo, New York, a car show in Jacksonville, Arkansas, and so on and so forth have been subjected to abhorrent shootings that have claimed countless American lives. What distinguishes West Memphis from other American communities is that our citizens aren't exactly galvanized at the news of these endless shootings, but instead we're desensitized. We're desensitized because of the incessant gun violence here at home. In fact, the night I penned this address, five shootings had rippled throughout the city in a single day, claiming the life of a two-year-old boy and eternally traumatizing mother. This unchecked violence is a direct byproduct of the repulsive ignorance of our elected leaders locally and on Capitol Hill. Ignorance that's deliberate and chosen. Massive super political action committees and political arms have poisoned our democracy and have funneled donor money into the pockets of legislators that are elected by the people and for the people. There's a reason why every measure taken to curtail this uniquely American issue has collected dust on the Senate floor time and time again until recently. Despite the fact that the CDC has identified firearm-related injuries and casualties as a public health crisis, and despite the fact that gun violence is now the leading cause among, the leading cause of death among American children and teens, lawmakers have seemingly turned a blind eye to an issue conditional solely to America among the developed world. Senator Cotton received a total of one million nine hundred and seventy-one, two hundred and fourteen thousand NRA donations pertaining to outside spending and contributions. Meanwhile, the state of Arkansas experiences an uptick in gun violence statewide. Senator Cotton, instead of endorsing H R eight, which would require an authorized background check for every firearm cell, extended his thoughts and prayers via Twitter upon the, uh, Uvalde shooting. Thoughts and prayers are undeniably essential and necessary for those dealing with this unimaginable pain and grief. But the scripture states clearly in James two seventeen, that faith by itself, if it is not accompanied by action, is dead. That's the only response that's been extended to reeling communities suffering from an onslaught of, of abrupt shootings, thoughts and prayers with no action. I ask the council to do not invoke thoughts and prayers to signal your virtue without taking up action behind those thoughts and prayers. The senator serves as one of many examples of those on Capitol Hill who have deferred the voices of concern to everyday American people in exchange for profit and grandeur. Let us not replicate the same fragility and irresponsible attitude in dealing with our crisis here in West Memphis. Let us set an example of courage and of structural change for the sake of our children, sisters, brothers, parents, grandparents, et cetera. West Memphians are collectively exhausted with the thought of their loved one leaving the house after dark and not returning home. Three years ago, when I initially spoke before all of you on, on this very stand, we led an effort to pass a three-point initiative that enabled felony expungement, protective policing, and enhanced after-school recreational programs. Mayor McClendon rightfully mobilized the concerns of jeopardized youth and the efforts ultimately paid off. However, the indisputable truth is, there's still work to be done and there's still solutions on the table. Mayor McClendon has provided vendors ample opportunities to invest into West Memphis by tackling, uh, blight on Broadway and tearing down dilapidated buildings to make way for new decent paying jobs. This is a crucial step in downsizing the rate of violent crime, which is largely, largely incentivized by financial instability. Along with my endorsement of the mayor's Broadway revitalization project, I'm proposing a revamped initiative destined to effectively tackle gun violence in the city of West Memphis, to pave the way for structural change in Creighton County and the state of Arkansas at large amidst a battle to restore safety and security for our communities. This includes a citywide voluntary gun buyback that would also include the exception of trades of non-personalized guns to personalized guns, similar to the program that, uh, Mayor McClendon implemented in twenty seventeen. I also intend to ask for a city authorized investment in a personalized gun technology manufacturing, such as smart guns with a tax credit for gun buyers who, uh, invest in such technology. These two measures would effectively circumvent the prospect of gun trafficking and unauthorized gun sales circulating throughout the, the city that, to the extent that it has throughout every region of the United States. In addition, with the signing of the.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Your time is up, but if the council will allow to extend your time.
Yes, sir. I don't have that much left and, uh, I appreciate upholding my time.
It's fine with me. Well, they're fine. Go ahead. They say.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Uh, in addition, with the signing of the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act, the nationwide implementation of red flag laws was finally prioritized as the bill granted seven hundred and fifty million to states to create such programs. With this breakthrough in turning the tide on the American gun violence epidemic, I ask that the city of West Memphis embraces the implementation of red flag laws and creates a citywide red flag hotline number to allow citizens to report any imminent threat pertaining to a firearm in the workplace, at school, at home, and to the self of the person that, uh, in question, to a service connected to the W M P D and mental health officials located right here at home. This is clearly and concisely an issue that deserves to not be disregarded and ignored to the extent it has in Washington, but observed and considered promptly. West Memphis has an opportunity to ensure that stories like Taylan's aren't shortened and that the influence of super PACs and tired narratives stops right here, that the unanimous support for action is embraced and not trampled, that our children can once again attend school without parents anticipating that dreaded phone call or news headline, and that we can retire the merd reputation of violent streets and limited opportunities and introduce the age of a safe and prosperous West Memphis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your initiative, are you asking, you, you're speaking on an initiative, a revamping initiative. Are you, what exactly are you asking, are you asking of us today? Is there something in particular other than implementing your initiative?
Um, well, uh, by saying that I want to revamp my initiative, uh, I'm suggesting that, you know, when I initially spoke before the City Council, I offered an initiative on gun violence and, um, this initiative, I think, would be more adjusted to the crisis that's going on now. Cause, um, with introducing smart guns and, uh, implementing a gun buyback measures that have taken place around the country and that are statistically proven to be effective, I think that revamping that initiative that I initially had and, uh, implementing new policies would be the best case scenario. So, uh, yes, ma'am?
Okay.
To answer your question.
Okay. And we can certainly work and talk, um, past, you know, today's, uh, request. So thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am.
You are definitely the future.
Thank you very much.
Of what we are proud of. You are, you represent that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes, ma'am. And, uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank the council at large.
If you would please, uh, leave your written comments with Clark's office so everybody can get a copy of it.
Yeah, I'd like that copy.
Thank you.
I'll, uh. It's, it's a bit out of order, but, uh, did you want me to go ahead and organize it real quick for you? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Senator.
Again, thank you.
Hang around for a second. I'm gonna get with you. Also, we have last, uh, Mr. Bass, will you come forward, please?
How you doing? I'm blessed, I'm blessed. Well, I have one topic that I'm concerned about, and it's all the children that's here in West Memphis right now. Ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Mishak Bass, and, you know, I have things to discuss about children.
Yeah, address.
If y'all don't mind.
Address.
Five thirteen Ingram.
Five fifteen Ingram.
Thirteen. Well, I'm asking for help from the city council, city council members in West Memphis for a project named S O Y, which stands for Save Our Youth. Hello, everyone. My name is Mishak Bass. I am here to ask help for saving our youth. The youth have nothing to do in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas. Ms. Murphy has a summer program reading program camp, but I heard she is not going to be back next year because of how, how she was treated with the program. And if y'all have any questions, y'all can ask me when you do. I would like to see, I would like to see more, more that is available to our youth in the city of West Memphis. The old shopping mall, which is on Shoppingway, uh, on, I mean, the mall, it's on Shoppingway, everybody, would be a great place and great activities for like arcades, bowling, bowling alleys, art classes, and many movie theaters, or skating rinks too, for the, for the children, our youth. They'll keep them out of trouble. They have nothing, cause really they have nothing, nothing to do in here but, in West Memphis, but waste their energy on shooting and violence. I think that too, I think that we can memorize crime violence if we offer more opportunities for our children. I guess you may say, you may wonder if the city of West Memphis would be footing the whole bill. No, we will have sponsors, we have sponsors, which can be given to y'all at will, at request. The biggest sponsor that we have are, are all our parents in the community. This is also giving the police a chance to present, present themselves, not, uh, well, present themselves absolutely during the activities with the youth, so, with, with the youth, so they can get to know them. Our youth are afraid of the police. So we're trying to make a change with the community so they can get involved with them, even, even though so does the fire department too. Gun, I think a gun drive would be best for putting in place so we can get the guns off the streets. Y'all can, we can see if we can exchange for anything, whatever that, that y'all think is appropriate for them if they turn their guns in. I know I am not the best role model, but at least I would like to try with y'all help. Just like a single mother of two, funding the reading program by herself with no help this summer. And she is not even from West Memphis, y'all. So she, the kids are speaking out louder than what we can hear. They're speaking. Can we open our ears and listen? You know, um, I would like to have y'all's support if, if y'all can, you know what I mean? Because if not, then we, we, we can't find it ourself. I'm, I'm going around to clubs everywhere around here because I see more things that's going around with clubs than activities like such as these right here. My daughter's here. If y'all want my, pass around, please. She's youth. She's sixteen. My voice, stand up. Stand up. Stand up. That part of the reading program that Mr. Marco McClendon, the mayor, is helping out with. You know what I mean? We need to keep this going because we have nothing for our kids. You know, they, they have nothing, nothing to do. So they're speaking and then, and nobody listens. So I would like to be the role model for them and speak for them and help them out. I'm not, I might not be the best person, but y'all give us a chance. The city is going down and the kids are, you know what I mean? The grownups are kids and the kids are grownups now. Can we please change this before it's too late? I mean, God is with us. Can't nothing stop us. We, we are great. We are a great city. I grew up here. Mishak, I grew up here and I know we great. What's going on, we're not paying attention to what really matters and that's on our children. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say a few things to you. I agree with you. Our kids is definitely important. But one thing I think we all agree with, uh, we all want a safe community. We want great things to happen here. But parents, and I, and I keep saying it, have to step up. It, it, I'm sorry, it's not the responsibility of these people. It's time for parents to step up and raise their own. There's some situations I may know, but I just can't get into it with this, you know, with the two-year-old shooting. But parents have to step up and start facilitating these type of crimes and start to help. And the community has to be a part because a lot of things is going on in the community. The community know. And then when they happen, they blame it on the police department. Like tomorrow, I'm going to invite you and everyone out. Tomorrow, we have a community prayer. We're going to go on Fourteenth Street, right there behind the, the facility that you all bless, Ms. Murphy, with the hell freely for the, for the, uh, for the summer. So, uh, your fire department, your police department, all the departments, we inviting everyone to come out and pray for our city because remember this, the word says, "If my people who may call by my name will humble themselves and pray, seek my face and turn." The people turn from their wicked ways. That when God will heal them out of heaven and heal our land. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Or is there anything else before the council that need to come? Hearing none. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Uh, by, by.
All right.
Opposed.